Good evening, I'd like to call to order the March 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Town of Trumbull zoning board of appeals. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Wentz, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I will take a call, I'm gonna call on people in the order that they appear in my screen. Commissioner Rampino?
Here.
Commissioner Saunders?
So he's on mute.
Yeah. Commissioner Saunders, turn some lights on, you look a little ominous there. Commissioner Krieger?
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
And we are graced by Commissioner Mayo.
We're here.
Terrific. Alright, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from February 3rd, 2021?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Any, any comments, changes to the minutes?
None.
No changes, okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes from the February 3rd, 2021? ZB.
Aye.
Unanimously. And this finger, I don't know if you saw, the second was from Commissioner Reali. That's it, we'll begin, before we begin our applications, we'll start with the town attorney, Mr. Cordone, who will say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, tonight is the regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the Town of Trumbull, March 3rd, 2021, this meeting's being conducted over the internet and by teleconference pursuant to the governor's executive orders. Any comments that are posted on Facebook Live or any other online format will not be included in tonight's meeting, and the commission will not see those. The public may comment during the public section portion of the hearings by raising their hand electronically, or hitting star nine on the phone, and we will go over those instructions again at that time. The agenda and all supporting materials for the applications were posted on the town website 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being recorded. And lastly, if you could state your name before speaking, we would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cordone, so I'll call the applications in the order that they appear in the agenda, I apologize for any mispronunciations, I'll call the name, an address, and application number, and we'll hear people in favor and anyone opposed afterwards. Let's start, and after each application, we'll have a separate session to discuss that, and then come back, we'll have a work session to discuss that application, then come back into the public hearing. Portion during the work session, only commissioners who vote can discuss the application and vote on it, and the public cannot participate in the work session. Application 21-0337 Evelyn Street, Richard Slade, for Christine Donadale, please come forward.
Yep, here.
And state your name and address.
Richard Slade, 37 Evelyn Street.
Good evening, Mr. Slade, can you tell us about the?
Sure, yeah, we're looking to put a front porch on the house, just give it a little more curb appeal, and a second floor bump out bathroom. Because of the non-conforming lot, we weren't able to just pull a traditional building or zoning permit, so you have to go through the variance process.
I don't, I don't have any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Rampino, do you have any questions?
Um, I just want to confirm that you're, you're staying within the existing property line and extending it?
We're staying within the existing property line, yes.
No questions.
Commissioner Saunders, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Krieger, do you have any questions?
So it looks like the current distance from the front is 21 feet, and you're proposing to reduce that to 15.3.
Correct.
That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Mayo, any questions?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Riley, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of application 21-0337 Evelyn Street? Please come forward, Mr. Chin, is there anyone on the line?
Members of the public, if they'd like to speak, maybe press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or press star nine on the phone to indicate you'd like to speak.
Hearing none, is there anyone, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak in opposition to application 21-0337 Evelyn Street? Please come forward. I don't, I don't hear anyone. And just keep in mind, if you're not speaking, please put your phone on mute. So there, at this time, we'll adjourn to our work session. Now, let's see, so we have a we have a full house, so of sitting members, so let's see. Mr. Riley and Commissioner Rampino will not be voting, correct? Right, okay, thank you. This one seems, I mean, they're already, they're already relatively close to the street, it really doesn't make much difference, it seems like a very a minor encroachment, even though they are relatively close to the street, and certainly an improvement to the property. I don't really have much to add, Commissioner Saunders?
Uh, no, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, thank you. You know, it's usually the first one, sometimes the second one, where I, you know, forget my Robert's Rules of Orders, but you know, thanks for, thanks for keeping me in line. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger, I think you've heard enough discussion from me. Commissioner Saunders, any, any comments?
Nope.
Commissioner Krieger?
Nothing to add, no.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo?
Nothing to add, you're.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I just, I did have the opportunity to go by the house, based upon the staff report that had a recommendation, we, you know, should take a site visit on this one, and you know, a lot of those houses on that street, especially where 37 Evelyn Street is, are very close to the street line, and this seems to be in conformity with those properties as well. And then, in addition, with this application, I believe, the application itself and the applicant clearly articulated a hardship, so I think it's an approval from me.
Thank you, all in favor? Just, commissioners, raise your hand, and I'll count. Is that Mr. Mayo, as his handle? Okay, so that passes, that passes unanimously. Are there any conditions for that? Yes. Yeah, if, if, once again, if you're not speaking, please put your phone on mute. Conditions from the engineering department are as follows, for application 21-03, prior to engineering approval, applicant must show compliance with the administrative policy for stormwater management and drainage design standards. Thank you. Application 21-0425 Overhill Drive, Keith and Jessica Brinsmaid, please come forward.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, good evening, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Alright, you want to tell us about your in-ground pool?
Yes, sure, again, my name's Keith Brinsmaid, 25 Overhill Road. My application is to allow the installation of an in-ground swimming pool. The pool will be 108 feet from the street and 18 feet from the rear lot line, whereas obviously the zoning regulations are 125, 150 and 25. I am requesting this variance, as this is the only practical location for the pool. If you take a look at the survey map, this puts the pool in my backyard, I live on a cul-de-sac, so it's a little bit of a it's not quite like a straight-on property, so this puts the, the pool, the front corner of the pool around the back corner of the house into the backyard. The owner of 2035 Pine and Turnpike, Kevin, he was gracious enough to give me a support letter for it, which is also attached.
Mr. Brinsmaid, did you, did you also speak with the other two owners at, let's say, the corner of your lot there? That are, that are going to be close to the pool as well?
I did not speak to those owners, as they're not impacted by the, that's within the 25-foot setback area.
Alright, I don't, I don't, is there anything further, Mr. Brinsmaid, I don't have any further questions?
Oh, no, nothing for me.
Okay. Any, any questions from Commissioner Rampino?
No questions.
Commissioner Krieger?
No questions.
Commissioner Saunders?
Would you say that due to the nature of your property, because you're at the end of a cul-de-sac, and it's an odd-shaped lot, that that is the only specific location, we were just trying to figure out the exact hardship, which would be the unique nature of your lot, being at the end of a cul-de-sac and being in odd shape?
Is that a question for me, yeah? Yes. Yeah, just, just the hardship being that is, that the only practical location is, is kind of obstructed by the 150-foot and 25-foot setback line.
Nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali?
No questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley? Thank you. Commissioner Riley, no questions, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of application 21-0425 Overhill Drive, please come forward?
Again, just as a reminder, you can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen to indicate that you'd like to speak, and press star nine if you're on the phone.
Great, and thank you, Mr. Chin, and is there anyone in the audience, member of public, who'd like to speak in opposition to application 21-04? Please come forward. Okay, hearing none, we'll adjourn to our work session. Can I hear a motion to approve application 21-04?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Krieger makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I, I don't have any words of wisdom to add on this, it seems relatively straightforward, that's as Commissioner Saunders had the applicant point out, it's the only place to put it on the property. Commissioner Saunders, any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger, any comments?
No, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Commissioner Mayo?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reali?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I believe the, the applicant reasonably articulated a hardship, and then the reason for placing the pool where it is, no other, no other comments.
Okay. Let's see. Alright. All in favor of application 21-04, please raise your hand. And it looks like it receives unanimous approval, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are some engineering comments. Mr. Brinsmaid, prior to pool patio construction, applicant must show compliance with the administrative policy for stormwater management and drainage design standards. Okay. Application 21-0518 Wakely Street, Amelia Ferrer, Ferry Architecture and Design. Please come forward.
Hi, good evening, board, thank you, my name is Amelia Ferry, 18 Peck Avenue, Greenwich, Connecticut, I'm representing the owners of 18 Wakely Street. We are asking for approval on extending the corners of the existing first-floor footprints to square off the home, in addition to a second story and expansion of the garage. And lastly, and a small deck that would be in the south of the property off the rear wall. As you can see in your survey, in red, there's some areas that are hatched, that would be the areas that would be squared off to completely the home itself, it's currently a one-bedroom home with extensive damage in the interior and exterior of the house, so at this point, what we'd like to do is we won't be going past any of the existing lines of the homes, so essentially just taking every single face of the home and just squaring it off. In addition, a recessed porch that's for curb appeal and a covered porch when you enter, to give the two-story some, some appeal.
Okay, just, just give me one minute to take a look at the plans for a second. Nice creative way to sort of fill in the blanks on this development, thank you very much. I don't have any questions, Commissioner Rampino, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, no.
Thank you, Commissioner Saunders, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Mayo?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would just like to confirm with Ms. Ferry, as pointed out in her application, that the property is currently a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, correct?
That is correct, thank you.
And, and then the lot depth is 100 feet. It doesn't comply with the current setbacks, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the total acreage is well below the required acreage in that zone, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali, or Commissioner Riley, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of application 21-05, please come forward? I don't hear any, Mr. Chin, we don't see anything. Ms. Ferry, is the, is the applicant someone who's developing this and, and selling it, or is it, is it a homeowner who's building it for themselves?
It's a homeowner building for themselves.
Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to application 21-0518 Wakely Avenue, 18 Wakely Street, excuse me, please come forward? Hearing none, we'll go into our work session now.
Ms. Healy?
I'm sorry. Is there someone on the phone?
Rosemary Healy, you'd like to speak? You, you have to unmute.
Ma'am, we can't hear you.
There's also, out there, you know.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hi, I'm on my computer at home, my husband is on his phone, trying to log in. I don't know if you see that or not, we are at 24 Wakely Street. The neighbors to the left of the house, if you're looking at the house. Yep. The house is very close to our property. I did look at the plans, and I did see that they are squaring off the foundation and, you know, going up, which is fine. But because it is so close to our property, we were asking if the before the construction, a fence could be put up on our property lines by the new owners.
Ms. Healy, are you talking about a construction, a temporary construction fence, or you're requesting a permanent fence?
A permanent fence, supposedly they are putting a fence around the whole property, but we wanted the fence that was adjacent to our land done pre-construction.
And, and Ms. Healy, just to, just to be clear, on your side of the property, they're not extending into that side yard setback at all? The, beyond the perimeter of the house toward your direction?
Correct, but the house is very close to our property line, it's like a few steps from our property line. And they're squaring off the front and the back of the, the house.
Would you mind if I ask the applicant's architect to address that, Ms. Healy, since she's with us on the phone?
Sure.
Do, do you have any additional questions, might as well get them all out at once?
I don't, I don't know, my husband's trying to call in on his phone, he's having a hard time connecting.
Mr. Chairman, yes, he is, I can give him access to speak.
Okay.
Sir, you may have to press star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Healy?
Yep, you got, my wife at home and I'm at my office.
Okay, yes. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Kevin Healy, 24 Wakely Street, Trumbull.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I did speak to Ms. Ferry earlier today about the privacy fence kind of idea, basically the hedge row, if you look at some of the plans that are on file there, it goes right down, right down the line, I believe the edge of the current chimney is maybe 11 feet from the property line, and of course, we understand that it was a pre-existing lot, I don't know exactly when the home was built, but I know our home was built much after that home, so for a privacy thing, we, I discussed with Ms. Ferry, the potential of putting up a fence and pre-construction, because there's going to be a lot of things there, and Ms. Ferry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we you advised that the plans were to do that, but it wasn't, you know, in stone or, or or finalized yet. So we would request that that be done pre, pre-construction.
Okay, since, since Ms. Ferry is here with us now, we might as well put the question to her, just to, to understand the and the nature of her response, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Ferry?
Sure, yes, I did have a phone conversation earlier today, the request for the pre-construction fence came up. Regarding the fencing and landscaping, that the intent is to beautify the property and definitely put up a fence or some sort of fencing, the style and make and type is not yet clarified. And then regarding the pre-construction, the only thing that I can do is ask if there could be some temporary fencing while construction's going on, but I'm not sure the owners want to put a, a final fence in until all the project is completed due to the nature of construction and potentially damaging a brand-new fence, so the request is going to be, you know, given to the, to the owners, however, I cannot guarantee it'll be done prior to construction.
Sorry, Ms. Ms. Ferry, but you are, you will accept as a condition of approval that there is a fence along that property line?
As, as a temporary fence, as, as a holder, is that what you're asking?
No, 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 after, after construction, I think, I think your point is a good one, that why put it up, you know, before construction when it can get damaged, but after construction is completed?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the owners have any issue putting up a fence, I just don't know the type and the make and, and whether it's a full six-footer or four-footer, I really don't know the, the, the specifics, however, I don't think they would be opposed to putting something up as a, as a divider between the properties. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wentz?
May I add something, um, yeah, just, just to, to clarify, fences, that, we do regulate fence height, if you recall, you've had some people that have been before you to go over the, the fence heights where, in, in certain areas, but the fence heights that are allowed, if you can follow this, is that the fence is allowed to be six-foot high, going from the rear plan of the house backward, and from that same point going forward, it's max, max height of four feet. So if there's to be a six-foot fence in any other way than that I just explained, there's a, going to be another variance required for that.
Okay.
So could I ask a question regarding that?
So, Mr. Mr. Mrs. Healy, so you understand that essentially, if, if there were a fence constructed for most of the property line on your side, it would be four feet high?
Did, did, did the gentleman that just spoke before you say, moving from the back of the property line, or the corner, the far corner, it's allowed to be six feet? Or, and then has to end up at four feet, how, how does that work? If you got a hundred foot of?
Mr. Wentz, who was speaking, is the zoning enforcement officer, where he can, he can explain that?
Yeah, so, so if you want to take it from that point, Mr. Healy, from the way you just described, from the rear corner of the property line, going toward the street, it can be a maximum, the fence can be a maximum six feet going to the rear of the, rear corner of the house. Now, from that point forward, going toward the road, it is a max of six feet, oh, four feet rather.
Okay, well Doug, you've been, you've been at that property, you know, from, we've, we've had several meetings prior to it being sold, so what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is, from the far corner of the back property line, it can go six feet high, and then once it reaches the back of the physical house?
Yes.
It has to go down to four feet high?
That's correct.
Okay, and the back of the house, is that the foundation or the decking that they're planning on putting on?
Oh, the foundation.
Okay, and then how close to the street do you, can you do that, or is that is there a?
Oh, that's a good question, the, with the town does not want the fence to encroach into the right-of-way, and that's typically 10 feet. So 10 feet, 10 feet back from the road.
Yeah, I understand that, okay. So back to Ms. Ferry. Are you okay with that? Or, and I know you say you have to talk to your owners, and I understand the pre-construction request is hold on one second, please. Let me turn that off. Sorry about that. You know, in terms of damaging the final, the final fencing, so I understand that if and there are some hedges there, you'll have to deroot or whatever, and I guess we can, there are a couple trees there, but we'd like to see them stay. Tree, the tree trunks are right on the property line, so Ms. Ferry, are, are you, are you okay with that situation?
Well, I'm representing the owners as far as the variances that we're putting forward. I can't make the decision for them on, as far as what they will agree to, however, what I can say is that they, I'm sure they'd be amenable to some sort of fencing and beautifying the site with the dwelling around it, that, that's the intent, because they are going to live there, so I think that you know, they want to make sure that their home and their grounds are with the dwelling around it. That, that's the intent, because they are going to live there. So I think that, you know, they want to make sure that their home and their grounds are, are well-kept and, and desirable.
I understand. You had, you had advised, when we talked early today, that, you know, the plan was to do some sort of a U shape around the sides and or back of the property lines of, you know, sort of like a white, double-sided vinyl, you know, non-wood good-looking thing. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
In prior conversation, yes, that's the intent. Again, I, I, I can't make a hundred percent those decisions for the owners. All I can say is the intent is to, to have, you know, a nice-looking fence, not a, not something that's going to be, you know, wire fence or something of that nature. So I, I, like I said, the, the landscaping portion of this hasn't really quite been finalized. However, I don't, I don't believe it's going to, you know, cause any kind of eyesore.
So, Mr. and Mrs. Hayes, does that answer your question, especially, you know, with that the, the, the type and condition of the fence? And the location, especially if there are trees on the property line is, is real unknown, and we really can't, we're really not in a position, let's say, negotiated in the, in our meeting. It, it seems like it's something that you can have a reasonable discussion of outside this. Mr. and Mrs. Healy, would that, does that work for, for you?
How do we have this discussion? Do we talk to the owners or?
I, I think this is a discussion with the architect and the owner, frankly.
Okay, and then I've never done this before. When is the construction starting? Like, is that all determined or how does that work?
So there's, this is, this is, let's say, the beginning of a construction process that will also need other permits and approvals. And that'll happen down the road, but that's also something you could talk to the architect about, and, and town staff can also walk you through that process.
Okay.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then in, in order for us to say, move forward, we basically have to trust Ms. Ferry and the owners in good faith to get this done? Is that, is that correct?
No, I, 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 I'm, I'm trying to deal with the, the situation as we have it here, that we're, we're not in a we may not be in a position where we can impose conditions that we can't quite understand or can't quite describe with specificity. So that it might be best for you and the owner to discuss them separately.
Okay. I don't know who they are, but I'm sure Ms. Ferry can tell us who they are. I think it may be on some of the applications on file, but we have not met them or I know there's been, you know, several folks over there gutting the house and filling up dumpsters and cutting down some brush and all that stuff.
Right, and it looks like the application's from an LLC, but Ms. Ferry said there, there are homeowners who will live in Trumbull.
Okay, so, so now what?
Any, any further comments or questions, Mr. and Mrs. Healy?
I just don't want the construction to happen, and it's, it's so close to our property that there is no fence or anything. I mean, I have, we have a lot of young children here, babies. Our property is used all the time by the children, and I'm just nervous because the house is so close to our property that if there's no, if a fence doesn't materialize, that will be a problem. During the construction.
Yeah, look, I, I don't know what appropriate, you know, measures they'll take during construction or what they'll be obligated to take, but the architect did say tonight that they would not put up a permanent fence before they started construction because it might be damaged. And we can't really answer what, you know, the building department might impose as far as, you know, with you know, what, what goes, what's required with respect to issuing a building permit here.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Ferry, so Ms. Ferry, this is Kevin again. So do we talk about this down later, outside of this public meeting or?
Why don't, so Ms. Ferry's contact information is on the plans that were submitted? And, and, and if for some reason you can't reach her, Ms., she's obviously been in contact with town staff. Town staff can direct you to the appropriate people.
Yes, I've talked, I talked to Ms. Ferry today, and so I have her emails and phone numbers and stuff. Are you still there, Ms. Ferry?
I'm here.
All right, let's, let's see, are there any, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to? If that's all, if that's all the questions, Mr. and Mrs. Healy? I'll move on to anybody else who's in the audience. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to application twenty-one dash zero five eighteen Wakely Street? Okay, hearing none, we'll now go into our work session. Is there a motion to approve the application? We were just discussing, discussing application twenty-one dash zero five. Commissioner Saunders makes a motion. Second, second from Commissioner Reali. Any discussion? I think we had ample discussion in that meeting. I don't really have anything to add to it. Commissioner Saunders?
I live right around the corner. It's a dilapidated property. This is going to be a big improvement for the neighborhood, so. Yeah.
Great. Commissioner Krieger?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayo?
I'm good.
Commissioner Reali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think there's a clearly articulated hardship in this case. And on top of that, you know, that property is being improved. We saw the picture of the before, and it's clearly going to be an improvement to the property. I'm, I was just a little uncomfortable with the conversation and the negotiations with regard to a fence, to be very frank. I mean, the neighbor did mention they had lived there for quite some time, and the house has been there for quite some time. If it's that grave of a concern, the house being so close, the neighbor could build their own fence. So I just had to get that off my chest. I think they have a clearly articulated hardship here, and the application is, is, is proper. And I'm going to be voting in favor of it as it's. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further comments. All in, all in favor of application twenty-one dash zero five, raise your hand. I'll see. All commissioners, Commissioner Mayo, great. All commissioners vote in favor of it. It passes unanimously. On application twenty-one dash zero five, we have the following engineering comments. Prior to engineering approval, applicant must obtain a driveway, show compliance with the administrative policy for stormwater management and drainage design standards, and make an application to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Thank you. We'll go back into the public session now. Application twenty-one dash zero six one oh three Crown Street, Brian Sullivan, please come forward.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brian Sullivan. We are at one oh three Crown Street, and we are seeking approval to install an above-ground pool with a small deck. And we came across that our legal hardship would be the pre-existing non-conforming dimensions and lot area of our property.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
No problem.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Sullivan. Commissioner Rampino, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Saunders?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Krieger?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Wait, actually, I do have a question. What is the height of the pool? Because if it's on a corner, don't we have regs as to how tall something can be within twenty-five feet of a corner? Or is that, is it on, is that a?
It's, well, that's, it is a fenced, it's fenced in. And then the, the pool's going to be fifty, I believe it's fifty-two inches tall. Does that make it, we are fenced in. I don't know how much of a difference that.
I tried, no, it's not a real corner, never mind.
That's just a corner of our property.
Yeah, it's a corner of your property, not a regular street.
Yeah, we are, that too. We are on a corner lot. This is the backyard portion, obviously.
Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Krieger?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayo, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Reali?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riley?
No questions.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of application twenty-one dash zero six? Please come forward. We don't see anyone. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to application twenty-one dash zero six? Please come forward.
Just as a reminder, let me press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen if you wish to speak.
Okay. We'll now go into our work session. Is there a motion to approve application twenty-one dash zero six? Mr. Reali is the, makes the motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Krieger seconds the motion. I don't, I don't have anything to add. Any, any additional comments? Mr. Saunders, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Krieger, any comments?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Mayo, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Riley, any comments? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Reali, sorry. I called him.
Thank you, Mr. I'm the Italian one, he's the Irish one, okay? I did have an opportunity to go by the property, and, you know, there is an existing fence there. And just based upon the topography of the property and the size of the lot, the non-conforming nature, I believe the applicant provided a reasonable articulation of a hardship on the application and, and during his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reali. All right, not seeing any further comments. Shall we put this to a vote? Application twenty-one dash zero six, raise your hand if you're in favor. I see four, five hands. It passes unanimously. Thank you. There are no comments from engineering. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion if you're sure.
Everybody. Mr. Mayo, quick off, quick off the draw on a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Saunders seconds.
Saunders seconds. All right, all in favor? Yay. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chin and staff, and Mr. Cordon.